And Happy New Year to each one of you.
Happy New Year.
And thank you for being here. Do welcome you to our first meeting of the Halifax County Board of Commissioners on this January the 6th, 2025, 9:30. Of course, all Commissioners are present and the meeting will officially come to order at this time. I'm going to ask Vice Chair Shanoa Richardson-Davis to lead us in the invocation, after which we'll do the pledge of allegiance in unison. Those of you who wish to join us, please stand.
Heavenly Father, as we gather at the start of this new year, we come before you with grateful hearts for your continued guidance and blessing. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and we ask for your wisdom and strength as we make decisions for the lives of those entrusted to our care. Lord, we ask for clarity of thought, unity and purpose, and the spirit of cooperation among us. Help us to work together with integrity, compassion and fairness. May our actions reflect your love and justice for all people. Blessed this meeting and all those in attendance, may this new year bring peace, prosperity and opportunity for growth to our community. Guide us as we strive to make our county a better place for all to live. With these blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank Vice Chair Davis for that very inspirational prayer. At this time, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. And Commissioners, I want to remind you, when you're speaking, make sure that you turn your mic on. It's real important, you know, a lot of folks are live streaming this meeting and a lot of times, you know, if you don't have that mic on, they may not can't hear you. So just turn it on and then after you finish speaking, if you want to turn it off, that's fine too. It's totally up to you, okay? I trust that my colleagues have had an opportunity to review the agenda. I would so entertain a motion for the adoption.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Webb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Redden. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the next item is conflict of interest. In accordance with the Halifax County Board of Commissioners' Rules or Procedure in the North Carolina General Statute Section 153A-444, it is the duty of every member present to bear all matters coming before the board unless there is a conflict of interest with, as determined by the board by law. Does any board member have a non-conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the board today, Commissioner Silver?
No, 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 sir.
No conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict.
Madam Chair, let the record say reflect that six Commissioners present do not have any conflict with any matters coming before us today.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Item A deal with budget amendments. Item B is property tax collection refunds and releases December 2024. Any questions or comments from the Commissioners in regards to that or any clarification of those two items? If not, I'll so entertain a motion for your approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Webb, second by Commissioner Silver. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay. Item two, special recognitions. And this is, we love this. Special recognitions, item A, 2025 Proclamation, Dr. Martin Luther King Day, Junior Day. We'll hear from Dr. Cradle, who is the Chairperson of the Halifax County Human Relations Committee. Dr. Cradle, good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Happy New Year to everyone. This is Mr. Bryant. This is to thank you all for your support of the Halifax County Human Relations Commission. It's a year ago I stood before you with our first proclamation, and this year we have proclamation again as we start the season of recognition with Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. Our proclamation reads, whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior dedicated his life to advancing the ideals of freedom, justice and democracy through nonviolent action, envisioning a beloved community where all people are treated with dignity, equality and respect. And whereas Dr. King's unwavering commitment to nonviolence, captured in his philosophy of Nonviolence 365, demonstrated that love and peaceful advocacy are the most powerful tools to overcome hatred, injustice and oppression. And whereas the 40th official observance of the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday in 2025, on what would have been Dr. King's 96th birthday, honors his enduring legacy with the theme Mission Possible, protecting freedom, justice and democracy in the spirit of Nonviolence 365, serving as a reminder that safeguarding these values is achievable when we unite in shared purpose. And whereas Dr. King's profound teachings and strength to love call us to be tough-minded and tender-hearted, balancing resolute action with compassion to create lasting social change, inspiring us to lead with courage, integrity and empathy in addressing the challenges of our time. And before I read this next, whereas, we know that our proclamations this year will look to include citizens of Halifax County who embody these values. Whereas the people of Halifax County have been shaped and strengthened by the enduring legacies of leaders like Reverend Dr. Charles E. McCullough Senior, Dr. Rory Bell, and Morris Johnson, who followed in the footsteps of Dr. King, embodying his vision and advancing the causes of equality, justice and community through their steadfast dedication and leadership. And whereas we honor Dr. King's life and work, we're reminded of our collective responsibility to heed the clarion call to stand strong, to let nonviolence and community be our mantle, and to ensure that freedom, justice and democracy remain protected for generations to come. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Halifax County Commissioners hereby recognize and celebrate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior and encourage everyone to build a beloved community through acts of love, nonviolence and shared purpose in the year 2025 and beyond. Signed, Vernon J. Bryant, Chairman, Halifax County Board of Commissioners, Andrew H. Williams, Director of the Board, Halifax County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, you heard the presentation made by Dr. Cradle. We need a motion for your approval. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Barrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You know, I'm not going to get lengthy about this thing, Dr. Cradle, but Attorney Rollins and the County Manager, and I'm not sure if Commissioner Webb and Davis was on the board at that time, but anyway, we had a problem with our Human Relations Committee, and we decided to revamp it and put people on there and put you in charge of it. You have done a great job in doing this, and I really just want you to know that. You and the committee all have worked very well, and we appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you so much, and I really think, I'm looking at all the Human Relations Committee throughout the whole staff, I think we got one of the best ones, I really do, and looking at the vision and the mission and all that. Now, getting back to what I'm supposed to be doing, did I carry that motion?
You did.
Okay, alright. Okay, thank you so much. Alright. Okay, item, item B, retirement resolution, Kathy H. Richardson, Department of Social Services and Vice Chair Davis will do the honor. We'll ask you to come forward, please.
I called Chairman Bryant last night because I wanted to make sure I was able to do this with my neighbor. Hey, I think that the community always has a heart for service and for her community. I think I first followed you and then worked with the group this weekend with the data for the next few years. I think a wonderful person, wonderful heart, the data on to me this week. Whereas Kathy H. Richardson decided to retire as a social worker through with the Halifax County Department of Social Services effective December 31st of the year 2024. And whereas she has spent 20 years with local government, Kathy has also served a many positions of honor in the community and state, as well as being a dedicated public servant to the citizens of Halifax County. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this day, Monday, January 6th of the year 2025, the Halifax County Board of Commissioners did honor Kathy H. Richardson for the formal adoption of this resolution to be recorded in the year 2024 on this day. Signed, Vernon J. Bryant, Chairman, and Director of the Board, Halifax County Board of Commissioners. And with that, I move that I make a motion that this be added to revenue.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Davis. Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Second by Commissioner Silver. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, very good.
Thank you. Thank you. We all.
And Ms. Richardson, we'll hear from you at this time, if you have any comments. You're not obligated to, but we'd like to hear from you if you do.
Well, I thank you. I see my buddy there, we've been on the trail since then, many years. But I thank you for this. I have enjoyed my time with social services. I cheated myself. I've worked here previously before, taken a love, but it has been, I came in with a love to work with teenagers, and I definitely have that same love, and I just hope the next person do the same thing. But I thank you and my husband and I moved to retire with Halifax County Schools also in 2021. We are going to go home and have fun and enjoy those kids and bring kids. Thank you so much.
Alright. Ms. Richardson, thank you so much for your dedicated years of service, and thank you too to your husband as well for his dedicated service to Halifax County Schools. And like, we tell a lot of our retirees, we do have about 40 or 50 boards. If you'd like to consider all those, just go to the website and let us know, okay?
Thank you.
But again, thank you so much. I do want to recognize Richard Holm from the Daily Herald. Richard, thank you for being here. Appreciate all your coverage and all that you do. Want to recognize our illustrious sheriff, stand up sheriff so people can see you. Yeah, appreciate you sheriff, all that you do. Let's give him a hand. Okay, next person is going to be retirement resolution for Cheryl K. Brown with the library system. And Commissioner Webb is going to do those honors. And also too, Cheryl, I'll tell you something, that library system, when I see Ms. Faithful is here, and I'm sure she'll have some comments to make after that, but we're going to just ask Ms. Brown to come on up and later on, Ms. Faithful, we'll have you and the others to come up as well. Okay, Commissioner Webb.
Ms. Brown, how you doing?
I'm retired.
Definitely want to thank you for your service to the Halifax County Library System. And I know that's a lot, it's a lot to do. And to me, the library is so important because it's the mission of our education system.
Exactly.
To develop a library that has access to resources, again, thank you so very much. Resolution, whereas Cheryl K. Brown decided to retire as a library associate with the Halifax County Library System effective December 31st of the year 2024. And whereas she has spent five years with local government, Cheryl has also served in many positions of honor in the community and state, as well as being a dedicated public servant to the citizens of Halifax County. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this day, Monday, January 6th of the year 2025, the Halifax County Board of Commissioners did honor Cheryl K. Brown for the formal adoption of this resolution to be recorded in the minutes of the meeting of this day. Signed, Vernon J. Bryant, Chairman, Halifax County Board of Commissioners, and attested to by the current Board of Word, Andrew L. Williams. Thank you so much.
And if y'all need to step to the side and do a better picture, y'all want to step to the, okay, go ahead.
Aye.
May I want to step to the side, okay?
I've only been with the county for five years, of which I had started a whole bunch earlier with the county, especially the library, because it was the best job I ever had. I've had a few in my lifetime, and seriously, I ended with the best, and I'm very happy about that. I love the team of people that I've worked with. My boss, bosses were great, and the employees of Halifax County have been really wonderful. HR has been splendid in all the questions I had about justice, security and all that good stuff. They've been really helpful, and so everybody here has been very helpful, and I'm just glad to be a part of it, and thank you very much. I'll be back, I'll be visiting. They might be to come already and do some program.
That's, that's great. Yes, sir.
Motion that the resolution be adopted.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Webb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Redden. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now you were getting ready to say something just before I go ahead and carry that motion. You were going to say something else? Did you have something else to say? Yes, ma'am.
No, just my wonderful, wonderful boss, he was just, yeah, he was working.
Okay, alright. Ms. Faithful?
Yes.
Come on up and say something. You're the, you're the big boss.
And you know I'm like a top girl.
Well, you and I got that in common, so.
So Cheryl came to us nine years ago, and we were so blessed to have hired her for that position. She has worked, put her heart and soul into everything that she's done for our library system and has made it such a better part of Halifax County and the way that we serve the citizens of Halifax County. Her time and talents and dedication are unmatched. Her baking skills are out of this world, in case you haven't known that. And she's also the first member of the library squad icebreaker team to retire, so we're feeling a little bit of feelings about that.
We know about the icebreaker.
Yes, yes, you got to feel that's fun. This would be a hard, spicy meal for that. We are very happy for you, Cheryl, we're very sad for us, but we know that we can count on you, we want you to know that you can count on us, because although we will miss you, you're always going to be part of our library family. We love you.
Alright. I'm just going to mention our boards to you, but you already said you were going to come back, so I'm going to leave you alone, okay? Okay, at this time, we're going to move to item three, public comment period, North Carolina General Statute, GS 153A-52.1. Just before I, and we have one person to sign up to speak under that, just before Ms. Staten comes up, I'm going to read a statement. Opening statement, public comment period, as required by the General Statute, the Halifax County Board of Commissioners provide a public comment period once a month as an item of business on its regular meeting agenda. Now is the scheduled time for the public comment period. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and begin speaking. You will have three minutes to address the board. If you have documents that you want to give the board, please hand those out before going to the podium. I will not go over the rules of the public comment period because they were posted by the door of this room. By signing up to speak, you have acknowledged that you are familiar with the rules and that you abide by them. We will do our very best to hear from everyone who has signed up to speak, but if we're unable to accommodate everyone in the time allotted, you'll be invited to speak during our next public comment period, at which time you will be given priority without having to sign up again. We appreciate your interest in Halifax County Government and look forward to hearing from you. At this time, I'm going to invite a lady that I know, Ms. Hattie Staten, come up and we'll hear from you, and just give your name, your address, go ahead and tell us what you want to tell us, and you have three minutes. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Hattie Staten. I'm the Director of the Hattie State Seniors Center in Scotland Lake, and I'm here today to be a voice for the seniors in Scotland Lake. This year, they had a little trouble with the low-income energy assistance. A lot of them didn't get approved. If you received food stamps, you did get approved. Seniors that got approved last year didn't get approved this year. Whenever I'm in the grocery store or in my office, I'm constantly getting phone calls. I cannot answer them and tell them why they didn't get approved. I have called DSS, they bring me their denial letter, and I call the person, social worker name that's on the denial letter, and leave a message, tell them who I am, but they have not returned my call. And this is a really serious problem for me this year. I've been doing this for 16 years. DSS had allowed me to come to their office and do 88 to 100 seniors to get here. They came to me once and stayed from eight to 12. Then it came down to the point where they gave me applications and I could do them and take them to DSS. This year, the ones that I took to DSS on December 2nd, none of them got approved. Some told me they didn't get food stamps, or they did get food stamps, and they didn't get approved. This is a serious problem in Scotland Lake for the older adults living in Scotland Lake and the rural. They know no one else to turn to but me. And I had just got so many calls, and I felt like I need to come here today, and I feel like somebody here will get in touch with DSS and come down and sit down and talk to me and tell me what's going on and what the changes are. I would appreciate that. For 16 years, I've been representing 80 to 100 people. Now these people can't get these services, their families are calling me, and I have no answers for them, and this is why I'm here today. And we do have, have another problem that we working with. Today, the school is two-hour delay, my seniors will not get a meal. Their home-delivered meals haven't had a meal since December 20. So I have a lot of things that's going on at the center, a lot of seniors in Scotland Lake that totally depends on me. So I would like to know if somebody could get with DSS and find out why these people that got it last year didn't get it. Some told me they got food stamps and they still didn't get it. So I would appreciate if somebody will come down to the center and meet with some of these seniors that got these denial letters.
Okay.
I have one denial letter in my hand today. This gentleman is in Greenville in the hospital.
Ms. Staten, your time is up. I'm going to give you about 30 seconds to finish. Go ahead.
And he is in Greenville, and they was going to turn his lights off. I called the Scotland Lake Town Hall, I said, please don't turn his lights off. He was getting ready to come home, but he hasn't been home yet, and now he is standing to be ed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Staten. Appreciate you coming before us. And Ms. Staten, what we're going to do, and with my colleagues okay with this, I'm going to turn this over to our County Manager, your concerns, your two main concerns, and I'm going to ask her to get with the DSS Director and just have a conversation about it, and we'll kind of see where it goes from there. Can't make any promises, but I promise you that Ms. Denton will talk to the DSS Director about it.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. Next item on the agenda, under Agenda Items, item A, North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association Presentation. Happy to have you here. Is it Matt Abell?
Abel.
Abel. Alright, you're Abel.
Yes.
Reddy, Willen and Abel. Okay, thank you for being here, Mr. Abel.
Thank you for the invitation.
And I don't know if you remember the time, but Vice Chair Davis and I had spoken to you at the Center for Energy Education some time ago, and we do appreciate you being here. I know that you've been contacted by our manager, but thank you for being here. We'll hear from you at this time.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And Happy New Year. I appreciate the invitation to join you this morning. So I was invited to come out this morning to talk a little bit about the energy transition, and specifically how that impacts Halifax County. As I know, there's been a lot of conversations here for the past year or so about solar development, a big development that's taking place across eastern North Carolina, across this part of the state. And so, as Commissioner mentioned, my name is Matt Abel. I'm the Executive Director of an organization called North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association. We're an organization that works to advance affordable, equitable energy solutions across the state of North Carolina, which is incredibly important in this moment right now, as we've seen across the state and across the country. Thank you. Energy rates continue to increase at a rapid pace. Actually, in fact, North Carolina has seen some of the largest energy increases in the country over the past year or so. And that's really impacting citizens all across North Carolina who are already struggling to pay bills, already struggling to pay for medicine. And so we're really focused on how do we bring more affordable energy solutions to those citizens we do most. So I have a couple of slides here. Our organization works with and represents about 500 members that are all across North Carolina, in the southeast and across the country. Here are a couple of the members represented here, including Google. We have about 25 local governments that are members of our organization, universities, nonprofits, and all of them we work collaboratively with to advocate on their behalf, the North Carolina Utilities Commission and the North Carolina General Assembly. So why, why solar and what's going on in the energy transition right now? So here are a few statistics from our partners at the Solar Energy Industries Association. So solar is growing at an incredibly rapid pace. So on average, annually, solar is growing about 26% each year over the past decade. New solar projects being installed every 39 seconds, and solar power of about 37 million households across the country. So it's a really significant portion of our energy generation capacity, and in fact, it's comprising a majority of the new energy additions that are added onto the grid moving forward, outpacing things like coal, natural gas, nuclear, hydro. And so this development is happening here in North Carolina as well, and a large reason for that development, solar is now the lowest-cost form of energy available to energy consumers in the country right now. So North Carolina is now number four installed solar in the country. We're home to We're home to one hundred and nine thousand clean energy jobs. We're number one world, uh, for rural clean energy jobs nationally. And so when you break that out by counties all across the state, eastern North Carolina is home to a lot of those jobs. Uh, Matt Conley, a lot of the projects that have been developed in this part of the state. Our organization tracks all of these projects that have been developed, from the larger utility-scale projects to commercial projects, down to residential projects as well. And so combined between the three of those categories, we have about forty-nine thousand solar projects that have been installed across the state. Breaking that down a little bit further and zooming into Halifax County, there are about thirty-two projects that are on the ground right now here. Of those thirty-two, thirteen of those are utility-scale projects. And when I say utility scale, I'm categorizing that as projects that are, what we call two megawatts or larger. So essentially, ten acres or larger. And, uh, so like a huge number of projects here in Halifax County as of yet. Uh, and then you can see about seventeen residential solar installations and two commercial projects. So when we start talking about utility-scale solar development, naturally questions come to mind of how much farm rent is taken up? Uh, and what sort of benefits is this bringing to residents of our counties? These are the types of studies that our organization conducts to help local governments better understand what impacts this is bringing to their communities. So each year, we conduct a report, our solar and agricultural report, to be able to quantify how much agricultural land is actually being consumed by utility-scale solar projects in North Carolina. And in fact, it's a very, very small amount. So only point two eight percent of all agricultural land in North Carolina is currently occupied by solar. And you compare that to low-density housing redevelopment, about ten percent of all agricultural land in North Carolina has already been redeveloped for low-density housing projects. Those projects are things that cannot be reverted back to the original use of that land for agricultural purposes, whereas utility-scale solar, after twenty, twenty-five years, should the landowner decide to end their lease, they can fully revert that property back to the original use in the agricultural space. And in fact, uh, not only is there a very small amount of land that's being occupied by solar, it brings, it brings a lot of benefits economically to counties across the state. On average, we see that properties that have installed solar, uh, have an average increase in property tax revenue paid to the county by sixteen hundred and eighty-two percent. And on average, in counties with utility-scale solar projects, they see an increase in property tax revenue of about one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. What does that mean for Halifax County? So on those properties, those thirteen properties that I've talked about that have utility-scale solar projects, you've seen a thirteen hundred and forty-five percent increase in property taxes paid to the county. And what does that mean bottom line? Three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in additional property tax revenue paid to the county. So this has real economic benefits coming into the county to help support services like first responders, roads, schools, infrastructure. Uh, and again, a very small proportion of land being occupied by those projects. Other questions that come up when you start talking about utility-scale solar projects, what sort of impacts are these going to have on neighboring properties? The folks that don't directly have a lease, aren't directly getting paid by a developer. A group called Kirkland Appraisals has done a analysis across multiple states, including North Carolina, on a couple of projects that have already been developed here, and which has included that there's no impact in home values due to proximity to a solar farm. Uh, additionally, uh, when these projects do get developed, developers are required to come with a decommissioning plan so that in twenty or twenty-five years, when the leases is terminated or comes to an end, if the landowner decides they don't want to renew that lease, there is a plan to remove the modules, to remove all the steel from the ground, and return that land back to its original value. And there was a bill that was passed in twenty twenty-three that requires that decommissioning plan be presented to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and also for that developer to provide financial assurance so that when it comes time for decommissioning, the funds are available to remove all of that property from, in the site itself. Additionally, one of the other questions that comes up is what happens to all of those modules? What happens to all the steel when you do commission that, decommission that site? Uh, solar recycling is becoming much more predominant in this space. I have included a map on the right side there that shows in North Carolina, we already have five sites that are recycling modules coming from decommissioned sites across the state. Uh, and so this is becoming more and more of the trend that we're seeing versus sending modules to the landfill. All right, I know I'm nearing the end of my time here. Uh, I just wanted to offer up our organization as a resource as questions continue to come up about solar and solar development. I know there are a couple of projects that are in the development phases in Halifax County. So if there are any questions, our organization puts together a number of reports, including some of those statistics that I showed you earlier. Uh, I know Mozeen Shopping Center for Energy Education is a phenomenal resource as well. And there are groups like the North Carolina Energy Technology Center, and also the other assistance if any questions do come up through the development phases. There's my contact information. Again, I'm the executive director of the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association. I'm available at any time to help answer any questions that might arise, and I appreciate the time this morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Okay. Commissioner Reddick, go ahead.
I teach at the local community college. It's an opportunity for the colleges as well as local school systems to develop career and technical education programs to help prepare young people that potentially work in this field. I'm glad you asked that question, and this is another area where I really want to elevate Mozeen's group at the Center for Energy Education, where they really focus on workforce development. And so there are a lot of careers in this space, and in fact, uh, you know, I showed that number of one hundred and nine thousand jobs, and we're seeing the clean energy industry far off pace growth amongst the rest of the economy. So that number is definitely going to increase pretty significantly over the next couple of years. So we need folks across every aspect of the energy economy, from accounting to attorneys to approach the, uh, electrical work, plumbing work. Uh, I mean, it really, it is all across the world in terms of the number of jobs that we have to fill, rolling around in this industry. Specifically, in terms of the building, maintenance of the solar energy panels and projects, what are some of the jobs in that space? Yeah, I would say electricians are probably a high-ass need. Electricians and then laborers who can help actually install steel on the ground, put modules on that steel, and then two of the areas that need a lot of folks in the immediate direction of these projects.
You finished, Commissioner Reddick? Okay. Commissioner Silver, did you have a question?
Didn't, but got an opportunity to ask one. How sustainable are these jobs? You know, you talk about installation. Five to ten years now, you know, we see deep powertrucks still going thirty, forty years after installation. Well, we see y'all guys footprint still hiring people ten to fifteen years from now.
Yeah, that's a great question. So a lot of these sites across the state actually employ not nearly as many as the initial construction jobs, but you will have ongoing operations and maintenance positions that are usually stationed in the region, either at the site itself or nearby at a couple of sites in which they're making sure that those sites are operational along with remote operations. So, uh, for, for example, there are companies like Cypress Screeper, Google, who has a little operations center in Europe in which they're monitoring all of their assets across the state and country. And so, uh, and then additionally, with the utilities, being able to hire line workers and other electricians to help upgrade infrastructure to get a, get a, interconnect these systems too. So aside from the initial construction jobs, there are going to be ongoing operations and maintenance jobs to be forward. And additionally, we're starting to see more of the companies that are manufacturing equipment located here in North Carolina. So an example of that would be a company called Obian Solar, who has announced that they're moving into Greenville and are going to be manufacturing the solar panels that are going into these facilities pretty forward.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We're in the Commission, Vice Chair Davis.
Could you, um, what was the year span that your data is based on?
Yeah, so most all of that data goes back to two thousand and seven. Two thousand and seven is when North Carolina really started to ramp up toward the single solar panel and grid system.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, uh, no action is required on this. We do thank you for coming out on this rain-cool day and presenting that to us. Thank you so much, and we wish you the best.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, um, next item is the Halifax County Human Relations Annual Review. We're here from Dr. Cradle.
Thank you all so much, Dr. Back in Florida today, just really excited about our last year and what we were able to accomplish as the Human Relations Committee in Halifax County. Really want to thank all of the support we receive from the county, from the St. Anthony officers. Thank you so much to Christina Wells and to Mr. Everett for their support in helping us to really sustain and build a wonderful committee that's going to actually increase our region twenty twenty-five. And someone, Jessica, is back there. She's hiding behind that position, but she's a vibrant, really impressive member of our committee as well. All right, so the next slide. Every year, we're tasked with coming before you with our annual report. That's one of the things I was really dedicated to. That's, but I think that's supposed to do it.
Oh.
Okay. Um, really dedicated to coming before you to, so to give you know what we are doing. You can be aware of the things we're doing. This is our committee. And this past year, we've just been dedicating ourselves to the various tenants of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We want it to be a resource to the citizens of Halifax County. Our mission was to create that relationship with all the members of our community, address their concerns, let them know that we're here because we were, as you know, overcoming a lot of years of dormancy where people didn't know what we did, and they were concerned about it. There was some confusion about what our mission was. This year, we've taken pains to make sure that our, our citizens know that we'll move forward in that in twenty twenty-five. So this report outlines our accomplishments, and some of the means that we're doing, with some strategic recommendations for the years to come, and then letting you know what we need from you all to be able to be much more effective in twenty twenty-five. So here's some of our accomplishments for twenty twenty-four. Primarily, we were tasked with really standing up this committee. So we revised our bylaws. Thank you, Mr. Rollins, for being there with us, holding us accountable, and answering all of our questions. I think, um, can we say Billy? Billy's been a really great part of our committee this year because we had to reach out to him on several occasions to ask questions. So that's what you can be assured of, um, that we will, um, make sure that we use all of our resources to know that what we're doing is in line with the Commission, the Commissioner's guidelines. So we revised that, um, bylaws. We have that framework. And then we were officially recognized this year as the HRC in the state of North Carolina. If you had gone to the North Carolina website before, Halifax County was, I think, was the accent. And we reached back out to the, uh, North Carolina HRC. They were thrilled to have us back, and they have since become a very, very great resource for us. Last year, we also had, uh, certain proclamations, and you've heard one ready before you today. We issued a monthly proclamation for all major national, um, events or national monthly events. We also fielded complaints from citizens. Last year, we fielded two complaints, two formal complaints where citizens contacted us. They were concerned about some of the things that they were experiencing in the county. And what our approach was, uh, kind of aided and, um, and supported by Mr. Rollins was to shift, to shift those complaints to our county manager's office so that they could be looked at. And, uh, we reached back out to those citizens to let them know that we had done that with their, uh, with their concern. Yeah, one of the things that really undermined the HRC is not really being responsive to, to citizen concerns. We've done that last year. We also thought it was very important for us to network with our community. So we increased our media engagement. I appeared on the ARR radio in, uh, in June of twenty twenty-four with one of our HRC, uh, community, our HRC members, Ms. Hazel Blunt. She has a radio show on WARR. It's called VODP, and it's called Crucial Communications. We talked about the HRC, and so we could let the citizens know what our mission was. We also tried to increase our visibility. We have been visit about everywhere we could possibly go, based on our size, to let citizens across the county know we're here. Uh, we, we participated in the annual powwow. Uh, you can see, um, our banner here. And, um, uh, thank you, Miss Commissioner Wells for being there with us. We got, gave you a shout-out for coming by the C S. And we were also at several different festivals, the Frank Myrtle Festival, and also, um, the Market on Main. We're going to be in as much, as much, um, as many events as we can. We went to the Dr. Martin the Key Celebration. That was one of the first things that we did. And we're also engaging with different community leaders. So our goal this year is to expand that, to be present. And we can't put on all the events, but what we can do is support other community organizations that are putting on these events. All right, so, uh, our accomplishments also were, were team-building and capacity-building. It's important that we, as the HRC, know what we're doing. And so we did, uh, a couple of retreats, HRC retreats, where we focused on team-building, our strategic planning initiatives. And we also were able to look at some things that are really important to Halifax County. One of those things is health despair. And we looked at that, that last year to see what our citizens are experiencing in regards to how their health is impacted by our local, um, medical community and the mindset about making sure you're taking care of yourself. So we'll be doing a lot more of that in, um, twenty twenty-five. We also had member training. The North Carolina HRC, uh, has, as one of its charters, training HRCs. So on November the seventh, Mr. Dean Troy, I know some of you all may be familiar with Mr. Troy. He came to the county some years ago, conducted a lot of mass county trainings for our citizens and for community, um, uh, communities, and also for Halifax County employees. He was our primary trainer. And next year, we are also going to be doing some additional training. We also connected with that HRC, and I had, so I, I attended the statewide conference that was held of in Fayetteville, North Carolina this year, met a lot of HRC members of the region and across the state. We were starting on that commitment. And, um, our meetings, and this is one thing I am so proud of. Sometimes you'll have a committee and people don't show up every week. I'm proud to announce that every one of our meetings we had formed and what we're able to conduct this.
That's good.
I think that's an important aspect of being a part of the HRC. Now, that being said, uh, this year, we do have a vacancy on our commission. Ms. Pat Field is relocating. And so we will need to fill a spot on the, on the HRC, and so we'll be talking to you about that. Now, uh, twenty twenty-five, where are we going? Uh, we're going to strengthen our community engagement, as I said before. You'll see us at HR, um, HRC memberships at local events. We're also hoping to propose some public community leaders forum, where we more go out and make sure people know that they're here. We're going to be organizing some quarterly forums. We'll be providing a platform for citizens to voice their concerns, share their ideas. One of the areas that we, um, discussed a lot during our meetings last year was this community language access. And we're working with the North Carolina State HRC to really research this issue, determine what the impact of language access has on Halifax County. A lot of our citizens, English is not their primary language, and they are encountering a lot of difficulty, a lot of problems as they interact with their schools, with the, um, medical community because they, uh, we're not as language literate as we really do today. Now, there are some tools that we can use, and where we work it was that one of our members, Ms. Myra Belgrade, is exceptional and has been tasked with really working closely with the North Carolina HRC to identify some, some strategies to, to kind of lessen that barrier to full participation for citizens whose English is not their primary language. Uh, the next bullet is really something very new to us. North Carolina has what they call a hate-violent information network. And this is a network where if there is a hate, uh, crime, or a great hate bias issue, And this is a network where if there is a hate crime or a hate bias issue, these are reported up through this network all over the state. And they use this information to anticipate what might have, might be some hatred impact and to local communities. And this is important for us because people don't like to report issues. We have had one that we've had to report to the hate violence information network. And what they do is they just kind of look at it. We are going to receive a report, a statewide report, that we can share with you, so that you can see all of the hate bias crimes, all of the hate incidents that happen across the state. We're also going to continue to promote the monthly proclamations. We'll be launching a lot of educational campaigns, collaborating with local schools and organizations to promote awareness and diversity in the community. There are a lot of organizations in Halifax County, a lot of grassroots efforts to look at historical contributions of different groups of people. We hope to make sure that that's known. Myra Belgrade recently talked with us as a cultural Black history book about the number of African Americans that migrated to Mexico as a means to escape slavery. We'll be raising those stories in our community so people are aware of all of the historical things that really shaped us as a nation. Now, we want to improve organizational effectiveness. We've got to develop a complaint resolution protocol. We talked with Mr. Rollins about this when we first started addressing complaints, but as complaints come in, we want to have a better process for how we deal with those, how effective it is, and then the transparency system. So, as a result, we're excited to invest in some training. The great news is we're going to get training, and even better news is it's free. You're not asking anybody any money for that. So, North Carolina HRC is coming to be with us this year. We have two trainings on schedule. One is in April, Spare Housing 101 Training. April is Spare Housing. One of the complaints we received last year was about fair housing, because they said, you know, my landlord's not, you know, keeping the heat on, there's no water in the home. And those things are present in our communities. There are a lot of housing that is just not meeting the standard of fair housing under the, under this act. And so, we'll be doing that April the 3rd. That's going to be during our regular meeting from 3:00 to 5:00, if anyone is thinking that our meetings are open. And then also, in January, we're going to have a more extensive training, it's called Crisis Managed Response Training. And this training is designed to help citizens, HRCs, respond in the event that there is a crisis in our county. And we don't anticipate that, we hope that doesn't happen in the event that there is a human rights crisis. We will be prepared to address that and to advise the commissioners on that. And then, lastly, we'll be rebuilding strategic partnerships. We are strengthening our relationship with other HRCs. There are meetings across the state, HRCs meet once a month, in different locations. Hopefully, one of those months Halifax County might be the host of one of those events. But, we have to travel to those events. This month, they met some near Charlotte, near Salisbury, North Carolina. And we want to be a part of that so that we can kind of leverage all of the talent and all of the information that we can get. We're also going to be partnering with civic and educational and business entities to promote inclusivity countywide. We'll be looking at a lot of things, especially as it comes to access. I've known as I've aged that one of those roots you can join at any time is people with disabilities. And a lot of our facilities are not accessible to individuals with disabilities. We'll be looking at those, networking with those organizations, and then providing a plan and a proposal to how we can become more accessible. Now, 2025 needs, here's where we come to you all. We need a new HRC member. And I've heard you say several times, Commissioner Wells, if you're all out there, would you like to be a part of this critical organization? Please, there are many boards you can join, that's a local place to use your talent. We're also trying to study new engagement initiatives. We'll be presenting a proposal to the commissioners to allow us to expand the HRC just a little bit. These will be non-voting members of the HRC, but we would like to include our young people. We are aging, and if we don't do something to include our young people, so they're a reliable part of this initiative, they won't be able to provide the support to the county in the future, and they are our future. So, we'd like to grow the plan that will allow the county units to participate as non-voting members of the HRC, allow them to know how these organizations run. So, we'll be collaborating with the superintendent's office in Halifax County to see how that would work.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Redd would like that. But, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We would love to work with you, work with you with that, because we're raising up. We look at the civil rights leaders of the past, they were young, very young, and very engaged. And then, support, we need the support for meetings and conferences. Some of the things that we did last year, we really were so passionate about wanting to connect with the North Carolina State HRCs, but like I said, those meetings are not here, so they require our, our members to travel at their own expense. We were able to attend the, the national meeting, well, the state meeting, but we did that because of our commitment to the HRC, and we did that at our own expense. But, we really would like a little funding to make sure that we can do that, and people who join the committee will be able to travel. And that's all we have. Thank you for your support this year. You will see much more of us in 2025. You'll be addressing some of these, you'll see blogs from us that is presenting to you so that our citizens understand the value of coming together, being a more diverse and inclusive community. We're going to be what Dr. King talked about when he said that we love community. Thank you so much. Any questions for me?
Okay, Vice Chair Davis.
What day is your next meeting?
It's the, it's always the first Thursday of every month. The first Thursday of every month at 3:00, 3:30. If anybody has a calendar before.
That will be February 6th.
Perfect. Thank you. And we may keep. What do you, the commissioners feel?
Okay.
Okay, with that information being presented, great job, Dr. Redd, first of all. I mean, you were very detailed and thorough in your presentation, and we thank you for that, and just a lot of good information, really is. I'd just like to have a motion from the commissioners just for the acceptance of her presentation.
Move for acceptance.
Motion made by Vice Chair Davis, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bird. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And also, when you go back to your committee, let them know on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we appreciate all their hard work, and thank you so much. You got that committee going in the right direction. Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you more. Please join us in any of our committee meetings, and if you're interested in any of the training, we certainly would love to come out and interview you. And thank you, our new liaison, Miss Duncan, thank you so much for your support coming forward this time, looking forward to great things this year.
Thanks again. Okay, we move to item C on the agenda, response to the LGC for audit findings. We'll hear from Ms. Duncan.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. All right, what I come with you today is, he said, we had shared for the audit presentation that Mr. Williams had said that audit ratio of the minimum operating threshold was zero as a requirement of LGC, and so hours fell below what they want. But, once you rate or increase in 25, so that should alleviate this penalty. He said he really wants to, not really, but he explained those things, LGC wants two checklists. And then, the other one was the cap asset ratio is below 25. We brought new equipment that wasn't purchased until September, and another time we do the other modifications, we moved the equipment there and covered utilities that were bringing way back a little. This is not a ratio, this is not a ratio that you'll find in the audit if you're looking through it, trying to find, it's not there, it's just something. When they do a data import worksheet, they file to the federal third house, it's one little tab that's straight. So, I mean, it's not going to be that I can show you, this is what they have to pass up, because people talk about this little thing. Anyway, I agree with him on that. Anyway, this is just a requirement that we respond to the LGC. So, I need signatures today, and you guys have to gather them up. So, I will be down this afternoon.
All right, but just prior to all that, we're going to need a motion from the commissioners to approve and sign a response letter to the LGC related to the fiscal year 2024 findings, and then she's going to upload an LGC portal. Any questions or comments, I think it's very self-explanatory, you have detailed information in your package about it, but if you have any questions or comments, feel free to ask it this time. If not, I'll need a motion. Motion made by Vice Chair Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wells. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Madam Clerk, and you can circle that around and get a signature to us now, so it won't be delayed. Okay, thank you, Ms. Duncan. All right, I know Commissioner Bird is going to have to leave pretty close to 11:00 because jury service is calling for him, or jury duty. So, I just want you all to know, he may have to tiptoe out around that time. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, and Mr. Barrett, before you leave, get the approval of the board to leave, because otherwise, if you're not here, any vote is going to be counted as a yes vote for you. So, y'all want to do that now, that'll be fine, but you need to go ahead and approve his leaving the meeting.
You can go ahead and do it that way.
Yes, sir. Right, okay, and then you can tiptoe whenever you want to. Can I get a motion to that effect?
Just a motion to approve his departure from the meeting at 11:00.
Okay.
We move that we approve the departure of Commissioner Barrett at 11:00 a.m.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Wells, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Silver. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so you can tiptoe whenever you feel like it.
Y'all will vote it down.
Yeah, yeah, the clerk, Ms. Turner, send the sheriff after you. Okay, next item is item D, grant project ordinance, Byrne discretionary grant, Christina Wells, Deputy County Manager. Thank you for that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Wells. I come before you today with two items, both of which are great project ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
And both, I'm happy to say are for grants that require no matching funds from Halifax County.
All right.
The first, our sheriff will be very excited to know, it's taken quite a long time, but as you will see, it's a great project ordinance for the Byrne discretionary grant, which came to us through federal dollars, thanks to the Office of Congressman Donbys. So, we were actually presented the ceremonial check almost a year ago, it's been, been a minute. It was in the springtime at the HCIA meeting. So, we're very excited because our beloved sheriff and our detention center have been eagerly awaiting and anticipating a body, which as you know, that will trigger, by familiar, Mr. Silver, that will allow them not to do hands-on body searches. They can step into this, very convenient, not a very tightly enclosed machine, we have seen it on our federal detention center tours, and it scans the body for any contraband materials that could be harmful, both to the inmate and to our staff. So, we applied, essentially, or requested for what they now call the HP copier marks, now they're called CDS projects, which is congressionally directed spending. So, we applied, the Congressman Donbys' office, as well as our senator's offices, we were just going to see where it would land. And fortunately, it landed well with the Congressman Donbys' office, and we were approved. $225,000 in savings to the county because of this federally directed grant. So, with the assistance of our beloved attorney, Mr. Rollins, we have drafted a grant project ordinance for the use of these funds. This was included in your agenda, so I will not go into detail. What we do need to note is that this grant is a reimbursement grant. So, part of the grant project ordinance in section five states that these funds will be advanced from the general fund, but they will be reimbursed once we do our reporting as required for the federally granted. So, if there are any other questions, I would ask for your approval of this grant project ordinance, unless Mr. Rollins or the sheriff knows anything else they wish to say.
Sheriff, I want to say hallelujah.
I was crazy. I was crazy with that, so is Mr. Brown, our detention center administrator.
Okay, any questions or comments from any of the commissioners? If not, can I get a motion for the approval of the grant project ordinance for the Byrne discretionary grant to purchase a body cam, camera scanner for Halifax County Detention Center?
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Barrett, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Silver, former law enforcement guy.
A lot of dirty business.
Okay, in a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hallelujah, Sheriff.
I'm here to take that first.
Ms. Redd, you can stand right there.
Thank you, sir.
And take on the next item, which is America's 250th NC Grant Project Ordinance.
Yes, this one's a little bit easier and a lot smaller, but we did find out, I think it was probably, they were a little bit delayed in their America 250 NC grants. I think we found out that we awarded around August, is that right there, for the first cycle of these grants? Just for background information, we have our semi-quantennial commission. All counties were encouraged to have a semi-quantennial committee, a commission of some, and I think we were actually the first in the state, we do that a lot, to form an America 250 commission. So, they have two sets of grants through the state, through the Department of Natural and Cultural Research. One can go to the county for their county committees' use, the other can go to various community nonprofits who are doing other work. So, the county committee grants maximum reward is $10,000. Of course, we're going to apply to the maximum amount, and our first grant that we applied for was $10,000 to go to various events expenses. So, you'll see, I had this filled out in your agenda item. We plan to give a bit of money for the bicentennial Lafayette visit to Halifax, that is taking place February 27th and 28th, which is kind of exciting. I believe County Manager didn't include it in your weekly update, some information on that visit. We actually have a reenactor coming to enact the trip that Lafayette took through North Carolina. So, really cool, he's going to cross the river from Northampton County, going to be greeted at the river in Halifax, he's going to have dinner in the hall, which is a little bit different, he would have been in a tavern, but listen. And then, the next day, he's actually going off to Enfield, as he did, and actually going to the homes that he visited. Pretty cool that we even have these places that were there at this time. So, that's one of them. And then, the next would be our Halifax Resolves Day activities, that we people will live up through 13th of this year. And then, finally, as we did last year, there is going to be a patriotic concert and laser light show on the evening of Halifax Resolves Day, which is Saturday, April 12th, and that will once again happen on the steps of the historic courthouse. Very well received last year. So, with that, again, this grant, they actually gave us 60% of the funds upfront, which is great, so we've already received $6,000. The other $4,000, again, is reimbursement when you complete your final paperwork, so that they know that you've done everything you said you were going to do. So, again, in section five of the grant project ordinance, it does reference that we will advance the funds from the general fund and then be reimbursed for those $1,000. So, with that, again, unless there are any other questions, I'll just ask for your approval of this grant project ordinance.
Just before I ask for that, any comments or questions from any of the commissioners? And Turner Rollins and Ms. Denton, y'all have anything you want to? And Turner Rollins and Ms. Denton, y'all have anything you want to add? Okay, if not, okay. Sorry, reached for that button, I didn't know.
I'm getting ready for the next item.
Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion for the approval of the American 250th NC grant project ordinance?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Vice Chair Davis. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Redden. In the further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And also too, you know, the 250th, and you all already know this, I'm sure, but it's a big event. And we've already started, the process started last year, actual celebration, and going to be doing a lot this year, and of course, 2026, we're just going to really turn it up a notch, and that's going to be it. And hopefully, we're going to have, probably Governor Stein probably will be here, and probably some of the senators and some of the folks from Congress will be here for sure. But anyway, we need to really pump it up because it all started here in Halifax County. And all you have to do is go look behind me, and you'll see that. Anyway, at this time, thank you so much. I did correct a motion. Okay. Anyway, we're going to take a break for about 10 minutes, and then we'll be back.
At this time, we're going to item F on the agenda.
Good luck.
Center for Energy Education offered to purchase company property. We're here from our county attorney, Lynn Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I am, maybe you all are too, but I'm navigating this new software as best I can, Andrea, and it's so far, it's been pretty good, but we'll see. This item has to do with an offer-
And look, just before you do that-
Yes, sir.
I want to mention that the vice chair of the board, James Pierce, is here, and also to Mozine, who is the executive director in the audience. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have their names right here.
Okay.
I do. The county has received an offer to purchase property from the Center for Energy Education, and it concerns property that we currently lease to the center under a lease that we did some time ago back in 2000, I think it was in 2014 or so with, at GenX at the time when we were doing a solar development, economic development project. In any case, I think C4EE has had this lease since about 2019. We've received an offer to purchase the property from the county, and a copy of that offer to purchase is in your agenda packet. The proposed purchase price is $75,000. And with us today from the center are Mozine Low, and I saw Mr. Pierce is also here with us, so they, I'm sure this is why they're here. I don't, they can come anytime they like, obviously, but I'm sure they're interested in what your action's going to be on this offer to purchase. I need to first direct your attention, just procedurally, to the North Carolina General Statute that is involved here. Whenever the county receives an offer to purchase property, if the county proposes to accept the offer, there has, there is an upset bid process that has to be involved before you can finally accept the offer and close on the transaction or sale. So that's, I've put a copy of that statute in your agenda packet. It's GS 168 269, just so you're familiar with what that process is. I will say that this is an unsolicited offer to purchase, and that happens from time to time. We'll get folks out in the, you know, in the community who want to purchase county property. We don't necessarily have to solicit an offer to receive one. That's the case here. But we always bring these before you for you to make a determination about whether you want to pursue the offer any further. So that's what we're doing today. I included in the agenda packet a memorandum concerning the background on this property, so particularly for, I'm not sure really any of you, except perhaps Mr. Bryan, I don't recall, were actually with the county when we entered into all the transactions with GenX. But in any case, I gave a brief history on this property in that memorandum. Roughly speaking, this is about 27 acres of land that is part of the original old airport property out off of Highway 158. The acreage is where the current facility that was built by GenX, the Center for Energy Education, built by GenX and then assigned by GenX to the, to the center for today. There's a map in the agenda packet that'll kind of give you an idea of where this property is. It's a little bit odd because a little over one acre of land is not part of, not adjacent to the other 26 acres. It's one acre of land off on San Powell Dairy Road, which is just south of where the main property is. But for the most part, 26 acres is all right there near the entrance to the site that is out at the old airport. Now, we've got a lease agreement on this property that we negotiated with GenX back in 2014. That lease runs through the year 2040, I mean, 2040, excuse me. The lease runs through June 30th of 2040. As of this year, 2025, there are 15 years left on the lease. I indicated to you in the memorandum that the current annual rent for the property is 2,307.45. That changes with 2025. Where, we're actually, beginning this year, the rent will be 2,376.68. And for your information, since I didn't have it in the memorandum, for the full 15 years of that lease, the total rent that we're still left to receive would be $36,725 with the 15 years on the, remaining on the lease. Other information that I think is pertinent to your consideration about this offer to purchase has to do with the fact that we are receiving property tax payments on the property as well. So you'll know, have an idea, the 2024 property taxes on this improved property were $5,313. Next year, it'll be something similar to that. We don't, obviously don't have a 2025 tax rate yet, but just to give you an idea of annually, we've been receiving a little over $5,000 in property taxes from the center for this property. We also wanted you to be aware that the lease agreement that we have, and I may have discussed with the prior board when this came before us, but the lease agreement we currently have that runs through 2040 provides that at the end of the lease, this property, including the improvements on the property, comes back to the county. It, you know, we will own the land and the improvements at the end of the lease in 15 more years. So there's a lot to consider here about the investment the county has in the property. I mentioned in the memorandum to you that the county paid over a million dollars to get the airport property released from FAA limitations so that we could use it as economic development property. And it is actually economic development property now, the solar farm and the area where the center's operations are. Also, and just another thing, is the county recently spent just under $75,000 to improve the parking lot on the property a few years ago. So we've got a lot of money in the property. I wanted you to know this because I think it's going to be pertinent to your discussion about what you want to do in terms of accepting this offer and moving forward with an upset bid process or not. I think I've covered everything that's in my memorandum. I do know, I mentioned before, this is economic development property that we hold and currently have under a lease for the solar farm and a separate lease for the Center for Energy Education. I'm not sure if there's much else I can say about that. I'd be glad to answer your questions about what the situ, any of the circumstances concerning the property. Kathy's here, she may have some information about the background on the economic development grant we had with GenX that led to us having this lease in place, or any other information you might be interested in about the property, as you discuss what to do about the offer to purchase that you've received.
Yeah, we're going to hear from Ms. Scott. At this time, are there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Any questions to Attorney Rollins? Okay, did you have anything, Ms. Vice Chair Davis?
Yeah, just in, in reading the information, I think I still have a lot of questions about just the way, you know, benefits on the county's end and just for the citizens in general, you know, and the impact on the center. I know it's a good resource, it's a great resource for us, and that solar energy is awesome thing, but, you know, just how has it affected our, our county per se and jobs increasing, things like that? What are the future plans if, if we were to accept this offer from the center? What are the county's futures plans for that? So just a lot of, I feel like more time is needed for me to digest the information and sort of get some questions answered as well.
Well, I think the principal reason or the goal behind my memo was to let you know what you would be giving up if you sell this property. And you would be giving up the lease payments that remain. You would be giving up the taxable income, the property tax income, and you would be leaving on the table the money you spent to improve the property, which affects to the parking lot, part of the money that you spent to get the property released from the FAA so we could use it as economic development property. And since you weren't with us when we were negotiating with GenX, a lot of what we have in this lease about getting that property back had to do with many other things that were going on in negotiating with GenX and an economic development agreement. So this is why there has the, what is, is the provision that we retain the improvements on the property at the end of the, the lease in the year 2040.
Okay. Some of the things that you asked, Vice Chair Davis, particularly, you know, how things look going forward as far as economic development, Ms. Scott may touch on a little bit of that. But are there any other specific questions as to Attorney Rollins? If not, we're going to hear from, did you have one, Commissioner Silver? Go ahead.
Just for some clarity on the relationship with GenX and Center for Energy, just knowing a little bit more history would help, you understand that?
As, yes, Commissioner Silver, my recollection is that at some point, GenX formed its own nonprofit entity to manage and operate the Solar Education Energy Center. Developing that Center for Energy Education was part of the deal with GenX in the, in the larger economic development package. And, you know, for a first, first couple of years, GenX itself just owned and operated the education center. GenX then formed a nonprofit corporation, and for not more than a year or so, within, within a year or two, they assigned, the nonprofit that GenX formed assigned the lease and other rights to the property to the Center for Energy Education, which now holds the lease today. And that's a very thumbnail, but that's essentially how it came to be, that the Center for Energy Education now is the less C on the property. Hope that gives you some idea, but the, my main point being that, that lease that we initially negotiated with GenX is the same lease that the Center for Energy Education now, under which they now occupy the property.
Yes, okay. Go back to him, and then we'll come to you.
Last question we need to see, with the 1 million dollars, and was that under a grant that might have been developed by taxpayers? How was that?
It, it wasn't, it wasn't a grant. It had to, I wasn't here with the county at the time that the airport closed and, you know, we were developing the new airport, but it had to do with FAA regulations before that property could be used for another purpose. The county had to invest the one, a little over $1 million in the new airport, so that was the investment, that we, the county had to use its own funds and put that into the new airport before the FAA would release this property from the restrictions and limitations that were on the property beforehand. It wasn't so much we paid the FAA, we were required to put at least that amount of money as one of the local government units that were developing the new airport.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Reddick?
I have a two-part question. One is, what has been the relationship with the Center for Energy Education since leasing the property? And secondly, regarding the permanent structures, those have to remain on the property, you would say?
Yes.
And if they weren't being used by the Center for Energy Education, what else could they be used for?
I suppose the county could use a many number of things. That's not necessarily a legal question. I don't really know how to answer that. I just know that part of the negotiations we did with GenX was, they would develop the Center for Energy Education, they would operate it under a, under the, I think it's 30-year lease, anyway, going to 2040. And at the end of that, that would be turned over to the county. And, you know, others, the county manager or whoever who would like to respond to the other parts of your question about the relationship or what the county might use the property for, it wouldn't be limited to a Center for Education purposes. It could be any number of things, just it would be county property.
I think Attorney Rollins did touch on it, you know, the terms and conditions stated that, you know, when it terminates in June of, 30th of 2040, it's when, you know, all the fixtures, everything, the building, whatever, you know, will convert over to the county. As far as relations, the first part of your questions, been very good relations with the county. Although, I can't say anything but good things about the Center for Energy Education. Did you have anything on that, Ms. Denton?
Thank you. Right, so if the property were to refer back to the county in 2040, it could be used for any number of things. The building primarily could be used for an economic development project, part of that, or even county usage, just like office space, that kind of thing. We've had a good relationship with the center. We did pave the parking lot before a pretty large event about two years ago. That was not a budgeted project, but at the request of the center, we made that happen on pretty short notice, and we spent $73,000 just on that, on paving the parking lot, which improved the property as well. So, I mean, it's, it's been, it's been a good professional relationship over the years.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Webb?
Yes, now, I heard the $1,150,000, and the reason with that was, that didn't go towards the, the GenX obligation.
Oh, no. This was-
That's totally separate.
This was well before GenX. Had nothing to do with GenX.
So, so would it be safe to say that the $1,150,000, we are not directly out of that if we go forward with purchases, because that had nothing to do with this purchase?
That's correct. It was a requirement that the county at least up that much of the initial funding for the new airport. And it wasn't necessarily that the city of Rock Rapids or North Hampton County are partners in that airport, weren't required to do that, but county did that as part of getting this property. To do anything else with it, that had to happen for the FAA to release it.
I understand. I just don't want to, I don't want that, I don't want that-
No, no, no.
-$1,150,000 going to my assessment, you know, looking at the, the value of the property.
Had nothing to do with GenX. And I know it's unusual to, to, to think that you've got a nonprofit leasing property that they're going to give up after the lease, but it wasn't a nonprofit at the time. That was, that was a for-profit, GenX LLC coming in on an ED project, and this is part of what we wanted. You know, it could have been a situation where we leased the land for a lot more than we did, but part of what we negotiated was a certain level of lease payments that might have been up here, but we're here, and in the end, that property becomes ours when you're done.
And Commissioner Reddick, that goes back to what Commissioner Reddick was talking about, relationship and working together. He was like, he said, we could have got more, but we didn't.
And in going down to the $50,000 that was paid for the, it looks like it was 1.163 acre land, south side of San Powell Dairy Road. Now, do we have to include that into, with the offer to purchase?
I don't, that's a fair question. That was to purchase a tract of land that was part of the old airport that happened to be owned by the city of Rock Rapids. This goes way back. I don't really know what the history was, but I do know that the city owned a portion out there near the entrance of the old airport property, and we paid that to the city of Rock Rapids, and they deeded the property to the county.
And the next question is, what is the, the tax value of a land minus the improvements?
I don't know that. I know the tax value of the improvements is $560,000. I don't have the assessor's value on the land itself. I may, I might have that, but I don't think I do. That may be what the Center for Energy Education based their offer on, was the tax value on the land, but I don't have that information in front of me. But the $560,600 is the value of the improvements itself, not the, not including the land.
Okay, any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else? If not, Ms. Scott, we're here for you at this time.
I have a good memory of all this. And we've shared the chair of the commission, and we worked with him to put all this together. But when the county purchased the airport, former airport property, that was about a 300-acre tract that became property owned by Health House County. And so Golden Leaf in 2012 funded a best use study for that property to help us understand what were the best uses that the county could realize from that 300-acre tract. And they worked on an overarching principle of, if you wanted to create income from that property, you would win that. And so we were being contacted by a solar company, interested in that 300-acre tract for a solar farm development. So this best use study that was done, as I mentioned, back in 2012, there were opportunities for community engagement. There were meetings held, there were people who responded to surveys to look at opportunities for the use of that property. And here's the uses that came back, and keep in mind, this is on the heels of the recession, the economic recession, the, what do we call it, the rate recession, right on the heels of that, where things were still depressed from that perspective. So one of the ideas that came about was looking at the government for housing. And there wasn't a big demand for housing at that time, so that was one of the items, but not really considered that much. Industrial development, light industrial and commercial, definitely something that that property could be used for, but because of US 50158 not being more than, it was something that, you know, could be better in the future, but maybe not right now. And plus, the county had an industrial center that they were, corporate part that they were developing at the same time, so needed to focus on that. Then recreation, sports was highly recommended as an opportunity for that property. And then regional public safety training compound, is all this coming back into memory now that we did this. But the board's main interest was to retain the ownership of that farm, but to create income. And so GenX was one of the companies that the county was lucky with to develop a solar facility. And I give Mr. Pierce credit for this, because one of the things that he pushed for very much was having some type of education and opportunity for training for solar. So GenX, George Vee, who was the owner of GenX, came up with the idea of the Center for Energy Education. So that became a part of the economic development agreement, like Mr. Rollins said. There were other companies interested in this property from a solar development perspective. The component of the education center was something that made it more attractive to the county. So that was the agreement that was reached. But my recollection is that it was always an opportunity to keep that 300 acres. We leased the solar facility, it's being leased and payments are being made, and we will get that property back to yours sometime in the future, so we'll retain that ownership. Right now, there is express design underway for US 50158 forelanding. It's an opportunity that presents itself for us for that property in the future. So that vision then of the board of keeping the ownership in the county's name and just looking at it as a lease opportunity or income-producing opportunity, I think was very smart, because we all know what 15 years down the road, this 300-acre tract, we're not making more land, you know, we're just gone. So that was the perspective that I thought would be interesting to the board, that there was kind of a due diligence done, to look at this and make a good decision for that property. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Webb?
You're making reference to 300 acres, okay? Could you be more detailed?
Yes, because that 27 acres is a clue, I'm not sure.
Yeah, 27 acres on the-
Was a part of a 300-acre tract.
Yep.
And that other 273 acres is leased to Duke Energy currently for a solar facility. So you've got this 27 acres, this right in the middle, right, you know, adjoining the other 270 acres. A very good question.
Okay, you finished, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Silver, did I see you, do you have a question?
Silver, Attorney Webb's question, the spotter's question.
Okay.
I've seen on maps and said-
All right.
If the settlement is to debt steel, interfere with the right of way or those other land?
I can answer that. If we were to sell this property that we have an offer to purchase on now, it would be sold, subject to that access road. If you've looked at the map I gave you, that access road would remain there for the use of this solar center and also for the owner of the lease on the solar farm. So it would not interfere with, with access to the solar farm.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner, Ms. Scott? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so commissioners, you've heard the information, you've heard the information coming from, from Attorney Rollins as well as from our economic development director, Ms. Scott. You know, feel free, we can discuss it some more, or you can feel free to make some type motion.
So if, y'all saw Michelle walk up here and hand me a piece of paper. To answer your question earlier, Mr. Webb, the-
What was his question, Attorney Rollins?
His question had to do with the tax value of the land-
Okay.
-that we're talking about. And Michelle, if I understand this, the 236 acres that is where the solar farm is situated, the value of that land is $1,827,700. The, I see 15 acres, Michelle, I don't understand that. Help me with that.
15 acres that's across the road, San Powell Dairy Road, that we purchased from the city?
Yeah.
That's a separate parcel, we just go and have a separate value.
Okay, but do we know what the value is on this parcel out front, the 27 acres? I don't think the tax office has it broken out.
They don't have that broken out.
Okay. So I don't really know how to tell you exactly. I may, you probably do on a per acre. I mean, you probably do on a per acre value, but it's one parcel, it's one large tax parcel at 1.8 million.
When I get my tax deal, it has the land value and it has the improvement value. That's what I was thinking.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And then we don't have our commissioner appraiser here, Mr. Barrett, you know, he's a certified appraiser, but look, that has nothing to really do with.
I guess my concern is, that's what I was trying to find out, whether the $75,000 was an appropriate value to see what the tax value of the land itself was. Because I know last time we did something, I think with, was it heating construction?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We did it at tax value, that's what I was looking at.
Okay.
Well, what I'll add to that is, is one thing to keep in mind is, is that, you know, we have a future interest in an improved property that also has value. Now, there are ways to go about deciding what the current, what the current value of a future interest in property is, in this case, an improved property. And we haven't done those calculations, but it's certainly more than $75,000 when you consider in 15 years, you'll be the owner of a half million dollar improved property.
You're exactly right. Okay, all right, any other discussion? Commissioner Silver?
Commissioner Barrett?
Yes, sir.
Why not have, not have Commissioner Barrett here? I just think we need to know the tax value for sure before we move forward even. And also, looking at the benefits of selling it, the benefits of us keeping it, also what ways it's going to benefit them, because if it benefit them greatly, it might get buried because of such a run job or economic impact and stuff. I think we just need to look at the full picture because this, in my opinion, you guys and blacks are.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
I guess too, I'm going to compare with Commissioner Silver that we keep property, and that says worth a half a million dollars. We got to keep maintenance down the road, okay? We won't receive any, we start receiving, I guess, looks like taxes on it at a certain period of time, according to the two lease agreement.
It depends on whether or not, our understanding with GenX at the time they formed the nonprofit corporation was that they would not make application for tax exemption until the end of the 10-year period that we had negotiated with them to receive property tax payments. The last year for receiving property tax payments as of right now is 2025. Now, that assumes, and I never want you to assume anything because this is up to the assessor.
That's right.
That assumes that they're entitled to a tax exemption in future years. That's for the assessor to determine. But that was that point.
And I guess my next question is, I don't want the county to look down the road 10, 15 years from now. We had this opportunity with solar energy and we missed it. I guess that's my, that's what I mean. It's a lot more, it's in the future, we'll benefit more with the solar energy there. When we gain $2 million already in jobs or investments or whatever to the county, then to sit on a building and say, we got a half million dollar building, but we don't have anything else but a building. I guess that's my, trying to weigh.
Commissioner Webb?
Commissioner Webb said, I think you all made some great points. I also don't want us to lose sight of the great work that they are doing. For example, many of our students from Halifax Community College have interned there as well as attended summer camps. And I see the potential for the Center for Energy Education to do even more, not only what the community college and local services do as well. So we don't, as you say, want to look at, look back on this moment and say, we just have an empty building now, or something else there that they fulfill its potential.
Okay, all right.
Let me, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And I'm just going to say, taking all what has been said, too, I think I still would like to see some numbers. How, at this point in time, how much, how many sustainable jobs has that solar farm provided to the county? You know, and is there a plan to provide more sustainable jobs? I know the jobs will come with the construction of it, but after we are finished with the construction, how many jobs, opportunities will be left in? So again, I just, I want to see the numbers a little bit better and have some time to digest those numbers before we make a decision.
All right. Attorney Rollins?
Yeah, I need to say this. I need to, I truly hate stepping to the weeds on things like real estate and county property and that kind of thing, but I have to go there. I hear the points being made about the future of solar energy, particularly in the county and what the county's, you know, prospects might be with that. But one thing you need to understand is, if you're interested in this property remaining to be involved in the development of solar energy and solar education, there is, there's nothing that commits the center or anyone who offers to buy this property to do that. That means if you're going to consider something along those lines, you need, two things need to happen. One, you have to consider whether you're going to put some kind of condition on the deed that would have a right of reverter back to the county if it wasn't used for a certain purpose, whatever it is. But if you do that, keep in mind that you've got to go through an upset bid process. If you decide you want to move forward, there's a required upset bid process where anyone can bid on this property. And in fact, the idea is, the reason for having that is to ensure that the county is getting the best amount, bang for its buck, when it sells its property. You put it out for upset bids to see if someone wants to offer you more. The moment you put a condition on it, you're not, you're impacting that prospect. So, and we're not in a situation where we're, it actually is economic development property. It is right now. But this isn't an economic development project, not now that it's in the hands of a nonprofit. It's GenX who decided to go the nonprofit route. That wasn't in any of our discussions with them when this all started. And that's fine, they had their reasons for doing that. But this is still economic development property, and we're not in a situation where we can sell this property for economic development like we would to another industry or company. So it gets, I hear your concerns and I hear what you're saying about, you know, what might be best for the county down the road. But keep in mind that we have limitations on how we have to do this when you're selling county property.
Yeah. And also too, think back to Ms. Scott's presentation about what the future may hold for Halifax County. And commissioners, all six of us, we're charged with the responsibility of doing what's best for all the taxpayers in Halifax County. That's what we're charged with, you all know that. And, you know, so let's kind of recap where we are and where we're going with this. From what I'm hearing from you all, I know that many of you have raised questions, and I hope Ms. Denton has taken good notes over here, if not, she may have to consult the clerk. And then, of course, I heard what Ms. Davis said too, as well, as well as all of you, what you said. But, and from my understanding, you know, we wanted some more information to come back to. So Ms. Denton, between you and the clerk, you're pretty sure that you have good notes as to the concerns that have been raised by the commissioners, also Attorney Rollins, you know, follow-up, you know, about what he was saying as well. And then, of course, Ms. Scott, her presentation too.
The most specific question I have is about the number of sustainable jobs that have been created for solar.
Okay. All right. Okay, then also, I think Ms. Vice Chair Davis raised a question about, about the taxes, you know, and that's probably something you consult with the tax assessor about. Now, Mr. Silver, what was your question again? You raised one or two good questions, two I came to call exactly.
And it was basically what was to you, the thing that we both was about the tax value.
Right. It's the other way, okay.
The benefits of keeping.
There you go.
And we had some questions, more ones, Ms. Race about it, to put it out there for competitive deed.
Right.
Will we be opening up a can of worms if somebody else knew about this day and said, hey, I want to come and compete?
Okay, all right.
And then could outbid her, what would happen?
Okay.
And then also, I think going back to Attorney Rollins, that if we want to put a condition on in the deed that it be by the Pacific Perfect Building with solar energy, I think somewhere.
Right, yeah, okay. And Commissioner Webb, did we leave anything off that you said? Because I knew you had concurred with all the two commissioners over here, but did we leave anything off that you were thinking about in particular?
Just what our previous relationship had been.
Right, okay.
Which we answered, and then what potential uses the property could be used beyond solar use.
The last thing you said is worth noting, I think, because I think we identified it first one, okay. All right. Based on that, commissioners, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. So the next steps, and I think, what I think the next step should be, in my opinion, is I think we need to, I think we need to let the county manager and her staff, Attorney Rollins, get together about these concerns, questions, and relay that information to us. And I think we need to probably, and of course, Commissioner Barrett, hopefully he'll be here at that meeting too. And so I think we just need to probably just put it on the agenda for another meeting. What do you all think about that?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, I see all heads nodded, so, all right. So that's what we'll do. And now, when do you think we need to set it? And I'm asking the commissioners this, and of course, county manager, attorney y'all, chime in if you feel like it.
I don't have any, I don't think we have anything overwhelming to consider other than coming back at our next meeting, which I think is January the 21st.
January 21st. I think we can be ready at that point.
I just wanted.
I feel like we may end up with you some sort of white paper on pros and cons, benefits, disadvantages, that kind of thing. And then the specific information that you requested. I think we can have all that ready by the 21st.
Okay, all right, very good. So that's what we'll do, and, you know, all right. Now, can we move away from there? All right, very good. Now, next item on the agenda is item five, which, and Ms. Scott, thank you for your presentation, that was something a little bit different, is the board appointments. We'll move to that. Mr. Pierce, Ms. Low, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
And if the staff needs assistance to gather whatever you need, we will be in session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Halifax Northampton Regional Airport Authority. Are we, are we all there with that?
Just one second.
Okay. Received nominations to reappoint Tyus Field and Ralph Johnson Jr. Can I get a motion for that?
Could you restate that again?
Received nominations to reappoint Tyus Field and Ralph Johnson Jr. to the Halifax Northampton Regional Airport Authority Board. Motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis. In the further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? Okay, now, the next one says deferred action regarding the reappointment of Orin Bryant. Guess who that is? And I will give you all an explanation as to what's going on there. Kathy, as well as Christina Wales, you know, I have been talking with them about looking at some type of corporate person to sit on this particular board, the Airport Authority Board, because as you know, they're the ones that really utilize that airport. And I thought that I would just get my seat up and try to make that happen on the board because we just, our Airport Authority Board, y'all is doing well, anybody can tell you that, but we just need to move it to the next notch, and I think that can potentially make that happen. So that's what they, and they have one or two people in mind, and the application will be coming before, it's probably in February, you think? Okay, February for approval, so I'll serve on it for a little while longer, but then I'll be coming off, just want you all to know that. But that's the reason. All right, with that being said, that, just put that on hold for now, okay? All right, next item, item B, which is still along those lines, Industrial Facilities Pollution Control Board, deferred action to allow that board or that authority an opportunity to make recommendations to the board. Can someone tell me what's going on with that, Ms. Denton, or Ms. Wales? Are we looking at that authority board or just?
I'm sorry, I was not paying attention. Which board?
The industrial facility and pollution control.
I have no knowledge of that board at all.
Mr. Chairman, that board rarely has to take action unless there's some financing to do with a particular industry in the county. I don't know when we last did one, I think Bob Hanudel was the attorney for that board. And it's kind of, sort of acts independently from the county when financings are involved. And it's not something we've ever had to deal with during my tenure here, and it's probably been 20 years or more since that board had to do anything, but it has to be in place.
Right.
So, other than telling you that, that's about as much as I can add, because I've not had to deal with any industrial bond financing concerned this particular board.
Madam Clerk, you have anything to add?
I was just going to say Kathy might have some.
Okay. Ms. Scott?
Yes, I will have some recommendations to fill any holes back for her.
Thank you, okay. All right, with that being said, we'll move on to the next thing. Judicial Crime Prevention Council. Received nominations to reappoint Eric Boone, Georgian Guden, Dear Denton, Kristen Martin, Orin Perry, Gary Redden, James Savage, Kim Scott, Kristen Scott, Stephanie Smith. Now, I had a question about Judge Stevenson, but April Whitaker and Gordon Williams. Judge Stevenson, he's retired as the chief district court judge, so does he come off that, or does the general statute dictate it must be a judge or the chief judge? Because I really don't know.
My apologies, I don't know either. And I.
It says district court judge, but I don't know if it has to be a district court judge.
Now, but I guess the question though, does the general statute say district court judge?
I don't know.
Ms., Madam Clerk, can you just check on that? Let's just approve all of them and put Tony Stevenson on hold for it now, because he's retired. And can I get a motion to approve all those names with the exception of Judge Stevenson?
Ruleful approval.
Okay, motion by Vice Chair Davis. Did you have, is there a second? Then we'll come back to you.
I had a question, but go ahead.
Okay, I'll second it, now we'll hear your question.
I was looking at the Cuban Algestas Board. There's always time to dedicate our banks and things. As I look at several boards, I look at a lack of representation from District One. I look at, on most of these boards, I see Devers, White, I see U. Plut. I'm failing to see eyes of any of them.
Right.
To me, there is a problem for this diverse county, especially when it can't. So I just want to bring that, and I look for more representation, not for my people, but for all people of this county as we move forward.
Okay. Good point, Commissioner Silver, and what you need to do is, if you see some of the vacancies that we have, and I've done this in the past, and I know that Commissioner Webb as well as Commissioner Davis have too, if you see some vacancies in this packet of information, you know, just go back and talk to certain people, tell them to put in an application. Now, that doesn't automatically mean that they're going to get approved, you know, it's a process for that. One of the main processes of the application is, they got, you know, they need to be carrying on the taxes, because if they're not, they're going to get rejected. But that's a good point. You like all these committees, every one of them should look like our county, I agree 100% with you. But that's how you do that as a commissioner, but good point, okay? All right, if there's not anything else, it was a motion or a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The next one is received nominations to waive the term limit and reappoint Terrence Buffalo, Robin Johnson, Sonia Leonard, and Barbara Plum. Can I get a motion for that? Motion made by Commissioner Silver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reddick. In the further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Madam Clerk, that's the end of it, right? Okay, now.
Let me just add, I'm confident that. Let me just add, I'm confident that you've got to have a District Court Judge on that committee, so that would probably, we'll need to talk to Judge Freeman about who she might, it could be Judge Freeman, since she's the new Chief District Court Judge, or we can speak to her about who she might prefer to have on that board.
Attorney Rollins, can you consult with our clerk and make that happen?
I'll be glad.
Okay, thank you. Now, Commissioner Silver, getting back to what you were talking about, about board vacancies, if you flip, and you probably using the computer, but if you flip over to the board vacancies without recommendations, it would have that information in it, and, you know, about different committees, like the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Community Child Prevention Team, and so on, and so forth. But, you know, they're the ones that you can go back and encourage people to put an application in. You know, don't be shy, I mean, just, you know, just go at it with it, because we need, we need, you know, we need these positions filled, and some of them have been vacant a long time, and I'll give you a good example. Marie Robinson on the Littleton Board of Adjustments. That's, you know, that's been vacant a long time, I think that's recommended by Littleton, but it's officially approved by this board, is how it works, but, you know, it's just a lot on vacant like that, but that's how you do it. Not only Commissioner Silver, but that applies to each one of us. Okay, alright. Now, back to you, Ms. Scott, you've been waiting so patiently. Economic Development Report.
There's no audience today, so forget it. And I keep on my phone, and you know I'm afraid of getting there. Good morning and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Good morning.
This is our first meeting of the year, I hope everybody had a great Christmas holiday and ready for a new year. And I hope you received our year in review, did y'all get that, did you have a chance to look at it? I'm kind of excited to see all the great things we've done through the past year, and look forward to moving into the full-size board of the new year. So, you have the Economic Development Report and your weekly update, I'm just going to get a few highlights for you. If you have any questions, just stop me and I'll answer them.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's in the presentation mode.
There we go. So, for November, our unemployment rate, which came out on Friday last week, despite that, that's up a percentage point from last year, and that represents 946 people that are unemployed in Hellbush County. And you look at the bottom, you'll see there's over 1,000 advertised job openings in November, so we've got many more jobs available than the number of people that are unemployed. Buildings permit values were just over 4.8 million compared to 3.43 a year ago, and our Grace retail sales, for the first time, were less than they were the previous year, at 58 million compared to 16 million in November of 2013. But we'll be rounding out the year, the information will be December, so we get to close out our year, kind of leave the year as a whole. But some of the things that we did in December were re-concessed with Hellbush Community College, the British Summit, we've had a great turnout, we worked really hard to make sure that we have good business support in that summit, and the subject thing for the apprenticeship program to come in and talk to the industry leaders about the importance in the, now, there's more than just a training program, it's an opportunity to make a strategic investment in the future of the workforce through apprenticeships, really excited about that, and we've been working with the college to implement that. We, the Hellbush Safety Commission, nominated Weldon Mills for Small Business of the Year last year, and they won, so they're in the ceremony in December that we were invited to attend, promising world representatives, just really proud to have this nomination and this win for Weldon Mills Facility, and they've grown to be a really great small business in our community, and just so you all know, for the inaugural celebrations that are going on this weekend, they are the provider, the bar provider for all three big events.
Wow.
Kudos to them.
That is cool.
One of the things that we accomplished is, at the end of last year, is the Hellbush Corporate Park has been a certified site for the past, and we were able to get it recertified under the newest guidelines, so really pleased about that. And then, you all know that our US 301 industrial site was named one of 15 select sites in the state. So, the Economic Development Partnership of Montreal, through the General Assembly, has given us $88,000 to do some additional due diligence, so we'll be getting some grant payments and having an announcement on that over the next few weeks. Our project updates, we're looking forward to even construction finishing their facility in early 2025. The Tesla facility is now open and running, so we won't be reporting on that anymore. And haven't made any progress with them in doing a grand opening yet, trying to get their attention, but they're not responding very well. And then, the Marriott still wants to get with their April opening. And one of the things that we're going to be focusing on in just these few months is Premier Boulevard, looking at some modern sewer, funding opportunities for that area, the Exit 154 Sewer Project, there's some connection being made to the Hollister Sewer Project, that might help us get funding attention to this project, so we're going to leverage that as much as we can. And then, the Southeast Crescent Authority will have a plant opening in early 2025, February is what I'm told. And we'll be looking at the gap for the air loss access, trying to fill that gap with Southeast Crescent Authority. Non-keeping in December was really impressive for December, things should slow down. You see the ones on the left that are the inquiries that we get, and you see the notation of buildings, that means that that particular project, requested building, that we're going to have in the event of the building, so we're not able to respond to those inquiries. But we did have some new client visits, plus some returning client visits, and working with some of our industry industry homes and great projects that they have ongoing. What's ahead, we have a lot going on starting January, kicking off the year right. One of the things I wanted to mention to you is, our ECU Health North has a new president, thanks to Popcating. We'll be looking for an opportunity to engage with him, and he can, because the hospital is one of our largest private employers, and just a really important part of our community. Hellbush Alisons, which is a private fundraising group for, in support of economic development, they have their board meeting this week, and then, we're going to be working with Roseburg and trying to schedule a plant tour sometime in January, or maybe early February, so we'll finalize that and let you know what that date will be. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Ms. Sharon, David sits on the economic board as our liaison, she's a great board member, we're excited about the year, we've got some great things. And I'll be talking with you in closed session, got a couple of projects, so I'll see you then. I'm going to go find my phone.
Okay. Alright. Okay, thank you, Ms. Scott, appreciate all that you do. Okay. Moving right along, County Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning again to all of you, and Happy New Year. I will say Happy New Year again in July, and I'll probably be happier then, because we'll have a new budget, and I'll be glad that it's over and that we're starting a new year. With that said, I'll just have a few items for you this morning, the first one is in your agenda pack, it's a retirement resolution for Linda Underdue, retiring from DSS, and for our new Commissioners, when the retiree either can or doesn't want, some people don't like public recognition, if they don't come to the meeting, I'll just present these under my report for your consideration and approval. So that's the first one today, if, just request approval of this resolution for Ms. Underdue.
And just so you will know, as a footnote to what she just said, many times when they don't show like this, we don't read it, because it's in your packet for your review, so we don't, really don't need to read it, unless you all want to. But if you choose not to, can I get a motion for the approval of Linda Underdue?
Move for the approval of the resolution for Linda Underdue.
Motion made by Vice Chair Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, and in further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Alright, thank you for that. The next item I included in your weekly update, I'm going to invite Assistant County Manager, Mr. Everett, to come forward. I have tasked him with taking over our departmental budget capital, and for those of you that have been around a minute, you know, this is like the kickoff to our budget season, we like to get this piece of the budget out of the way, so that we can focus on the operating type budget for the departments, and they will get their allotment and their packets and their budget guidance the first of February. So this is the first piece of it, I'm going to invite Mr. Everett to come up and present that to you, and request basically preliminary approval, you'll essentially approve it with the budget in June as a whole.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner-
Yes, sir.
...and manager, last one of these, pray in the family. It's my pleasure to present to you today the Department Capital Outlay Budget for the 25, 26 years. If you place your attention to the sheet that looks like this, looking to the far left, you see the color-coded tabs there, know they characterize public utility, tax regulations, regulations. And underneath that, you see categories, vehicles, maintenance and repairs, technology, inventory equipment, two different things. And across the menu, you see the recurring capital expenses requested and approved, and the Ucapal expenses requested and approved. To address the question about the vehicles approved, $650,000, that is a enterprise lease program we have for the Sheriff Department for their vehicles. And the $430,000 in Ucapal expenses approved for vehicles of $400,000, $430,000, that's for our ambulances, band for DSS, and inspection vehicles. And as you see on the right column there, you see those same color-coded sectors tabs there. As far as the funding for each of those, the general fund is what pays for the county fund, the county sector. The enterprise funds, which is the purchase, the sale of services and goods for the public firms, the public sector for fees. And the tax regulation, that portion comes from the property bag of taxes. And the total for each comes up to $4,532,000, $231,000. If there's any questions, I would like to request an ask for preliminary request of approval for the government outfitting.
Okay, any questions or comments of Mr. Everett and Ms. Denton in regards to this? If not, you've heard his request, what is your pleasure? Motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis, and in further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? You know, you all already know this, you know, coming from the Commissioners Retreat, you know, they, really we start our budget thing kind of earlier all the time, and just keep it kind of rolling, and so they, you know, by February, March, April, this crowd's going to be very busy, you know, I mean, meeting with school officials, community college, you know, other people, they're going to be real, real busy with this budget, be with the sheriff. So, anyway, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate you. Alright, Ms. Denton, back on you.
Yes, one more thing, I don't request any guidance today, but it's for your information, and I'll make sure to get another piece to Commissioner Barrett in your weekly update, you had some information about the amounts the county has paid the last several years, we have done five full years, and then we're into fiscal year 24, 25 this year, about what the county has paid to house our inmates in other jails due to us being over capacity. That is across the top of that worksheet that looks like this. And then below, there was a question about the debt that the county has in process, and quite a lot of it will be retired in '26. So that, to give you, that gives you a little bit of perspective about what amount of cash you'll have to work with as these debts roll off, as you proceed with the jail project, and what your debt service payments could look like and what you have available. Friday afternoon, we got the updated numbers from our financial advisor, First Tryon, so I'm going to pass that out to you. I'll pass two down to y'all. I've got some for management team, I'll give these to you all this afternoon. The only thing I ask of today is for you to take this with you, and to look at what your options are, we, for the new Commissioners, back in the fall, or back in the, actually, I think it was last spring.
Last April.
Last April, thank you. Our financial advisor, David Cheatwood of First Tryon, came and made a presentation to the board about the different options you would have to finance this new facility. You have three primary options that are listed here, and we asked for them to prepare projects for a $30 million, a $40 million, or a $50 million facility. I think at this point, we would probably tell you to look closely at the $50 million range, just some preliminary conversations with our architects and with the sheriff, and the needs that we have and will have, if you'll think about that. And also, just as an aside, but to consider with the financing, the court services building down the street, that we got 8.2 million from Representative Ray and the General Assembly about, that's not quite enough to finish the full renovations, to move everyone upstairs and complete that third floor, and then to do some minor, more minor renovations on the first two floors, to include sprinkling the whole building, the building is not sprinkled, and that adds about a million dollars to the project cost, so it's not cheap. I would request up to about $5 million of this to be tacked on to finish that project, so you'd be looking at maybe a $45 million or so project cost for a detention center. I will tell you, we, when we met with our architects on Friday for our scoping meeting, we don't have our contract yet, we'll be bringing that to you, we did ask them to go look at a couple of recent projects with other counties to get a full project cost, because the construction's just a piece of it. You'll have costs for just your design, different fees, inspections, permits, that kind of thing. So we want to be able to bring that to you, we hope to have that for you on the 21st at your meeting. And I would also like for you to take all this with you and look it over, and what we would like on the 21st is for you to give us a budget. If you will take that and digest all of this, please call us if you have questions between now and then. We're happy to talk through anything that you may have questions about, we'll be prepared to talk about these things on the 21st. But I think this is the information that you can take with you. This is a big project, big investment, so I want you all to be, to have plenty of time to think it through. I'll make sure to get this to Commissioner Barrett as well, so that he has it to also look at.
And to let him know be prepared on 21st?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That is all I had, I didn't need any direction about that today, I just wanted you to have it and to take it with you. And that is all I have from my report.
Ms. Denton, thank you so much for that, that's, that's very good and very helpful, and I know Commissioner Webb is very happy about that.
Yes. I'm the Public Safety Commissioner.
That's right, about everything, like loving, attorney, commissioner. Sheriff, I don't want you to give me a long drawn-out explanation, but I would like to know, like for my colleagues to know, you know, how many inmates do you currently have at the jail, and how many inmates do you have in other places?
We have 224 at the jail out of this morning, and another 24 out.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you, sir.
And we'll be having an additional discussion with you in closed session, a legal matter that the sheriff will stay for.
Okay, alright. Okay. All right.
In addition to economic development.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, sir.
Great, this is great work, Ms. Denton. Thank you and your staff for putting this together.
Thank you.
All right. County Attorney's Report. You go talk some more?
Just a bit. I'll add on to the report from First Tryon. I want to thank the board years ago for engaging and retaining First Tryon advisors to help us with this kind of analysis on financing. They have proved with other projects to be very helpful, and we look forward to their assistance as we move forward on the jail project as well. So having, this is in addition to bond counsel that you're going, we'll retain at the time, but First Tryon does a great job of breaking down as best they can what your projections might be for financing options. So my thanks to them and thank you for bringing them on board several years ago for everything. I don't have anything particularly new to tell you in open session. I can tell you, once again, I get tired of saying it, we still do not have a decision from the Court of Appeals in our matter with the city of Bronx Rapids. They just issued opinions last week. They'll issue another round of opinions on January the 15th, and we'll keep hoping that we get a decision soon, one way or another. Do have a couple of matters to discuss with you in closed session that need to remain privileged for the time being, so I'll ask you to consider that when you approach closed session. But that's all I really have.
Attorney Collins, I think I know the answer to this, but, you know, do you think they could have dropped, followed through the cracks with the court on that matter?
I highly, highly doubt that.
Okay.
I suspect that they're just having a really hard time with a very original issue, and I think that's really what it's about.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that being said, any other business?
I have a couple of concerns that've come, just from citizens, over the, since we last met.
You got your mic on? Okay.
Yes, it's on. Again, a couple of concerns has come to my attention since we last met from a couple of citizens who have called me. Basically more concerned of water, getting access to county water, that they're beyond the cutoff range, and I believe they reached out to Chris and was directed to express their concerns to the county commissioners. I did call that person back, but left a message for them to call back. But I encourage all citizens, if they have an issue, it's very powerful for them to attend our meetings, to express their concerns during public comment, so that we all can hear those concerns at the same time, and then we can go back and discuss and provide some solutions. But again, I know that there are some people in our county that does not have access to the county water. My question would be, do we know a number of our citizens who are within that cutoff zone and the likelihood of that being a reality for them?
I think Mr. Williams can see a little bit of light on it. Go ahead.
In the situation that you're referring to, there is a stretch of Highway 861 between Wayman Church Road and Highway 41 that is not served with a water main. Water comes down Wayman Church Road, comes down Highway 48, and then comes down Highway 4. But at the time that that phase was developed, in looking at the residents there and the cost per mile to a trillion per resident, I'm assuming that those numbers didn't work out from an engineering perspective. Now, several of those residents have issues with their wells. At the time, they were happy with their wells, so they did not express an interest in having county water on that vein. Now their wells are failing, and so they're reaching out about that. So that's another reason that I encouraged them to reach out to you, was to figure that in front of you, that there are issues developing in that area as far as the quality and the quantity of well water. We do have potential to develop some projects out of some of the open-enabled funds. I've asked our engineers to look at that kind of on the side, give me some rough numbers, and have taken all of the past petitions for service that I could find and relay that information to the engineering group, but I have not received anything back from them. That area is one of them. It would make sense from a engineering and water hydraulics perspective to have that connection there, whether there are uses or not. Obviously, there will be now. So the long answer to a short question is, we're looking at it. I think there are funds there to be able to do something, but it's not something, as I expressed to the individual, it's not something that's going to happen in six to nine months. It's a two to five year project. So you'll hear more people probably reaching out about that particular part of the county than what we can do, but it's not a solution that would come of this within a year. To do is do it right and permitting and that sort of thing, be a two to five year project.
Okay.
That's my direction there, sufficiently.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate it. You okay?
Yes, I'm fine. I just want to make, so that it will be on our agenda from now on. Okay. On our targets.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Commissioner, Vice Chair Davis?
No. And the second concern I did share with the, concerned the Meadow Sewers District, there was some talk going around about some concerns about how they were going to fertilize this specific area. But I was told that there would be a community meeting coming up soon. Do we have any more?
I don't have a date for it yet. I can tell you from staff's perspective, we do not support that particular option to provide sewer. We are looking at a more broad and comprehensive solution that could tap into Exit 154 and connect those two and make a larger project out of it to enhance economic development, that kind of thing. Some of the concerns, I understand why they ask those questions, they're slightly misinformed, but the community meeting should help address those.
Okay. So as soon as we get information about when that's scheduled, please let me know.
We will. We've been meeting with them monthly. I can tell you the USDA is highly in favor of these decentralized systems. From our perspective, that may not be the best longer-term solution for the citizens and what that can bring them.
Can I add?
Yes, sir.
The other thing about that is that it wouldn't necessarily be a system that involved spraying anything on a field. Even if it was a centralized system, it would probably likely involve something that's more of, that does involve spraying any kind of byproduct or whatever on a field. I don't know that that's necessarily even being considered, but more details about that will come at that public meeting.
Okay. All right. Good questions. Anything else?
I just wanted to acknowledge that many of our school systems are returning to school today or this week, and a lot of our students like to see us show up, maybe for a career day, or sometimes if you talk to the principals, they're looking for volunteers or activity days or other activities that they're having. And then sometimes some of the schools have discipline issues, and I've been going out to the Skollamack Primary School, and you just don't know what a difference it can make to show up and the principal bring the boys in, for example, and you talk with them or you help them with some of their schoolwork while you're there. So I wanted to put that on our radar for the semester.
Okay. Thank you. Thank both of you. Commissioner Silver?
Commissioner Ryan, we got the sheriff there here. Need to reach out to Environmental Services. This is not a joke. You leave my house within five miles to seven miles, you can pick up a tractor and trailer load, bed mattresses, sofas, and chairs. Guys, we need somebody to look at it. I know you get lost in there, but Scott, he used to go out there sometime looking at stuff. But since then, and I actually caught one fella that was dropping some. So we got to talk about hours since the landfill opened up there, but we look like a war zone. And I would love for y'all guys to come and then ride, commissioners, the area, just ride between White Oak, Hollister, and those back roads and see. It's downright embarrassing. And I picked up a couple myself.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. So we need some help from you guys.
Okay. I'm sure that sheriff's going to take that on advisement and pass that on. Okay. Anything else? Very good. Good discussion. Okay. Any other business? If not, need a motion to go into closed session?
Seven.
Okay.
Can we specify for economic development?
Yeah, economic development.
Attorney-client program.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. All right. You made a motion, Commissioner Silver. Okay, for those two reasons, we're going in closed session. Can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Reddick. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now...
Do you all need to take a break?